All right, let's go ahead and call the order. Thank you all for attending here in person or at home. We will go ahead and go to the first item of business, which is approval of the last minutes. Yes, for both June and July. Separate please.
This is Amy. I'll approve the June 14 board minutes.
This is Jared, all second.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All those opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. We have a motion for the July minutes.
Yeah, move that we approved the July minute.
Bridgely, all second.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion on the July minutes? All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, so next up on the agenda, we have public comments. So Ms. Brunzel, I believe, yes. Okay, so before we start public comments, we always just say a few words. Yeah, please feel free. We'll always say a few words to kind of remind our speakers around what the process is as we go through those public comments. So Ms. Brunzel, you'll be given three minutes to share your feedback, and I'll keep track of the time over here. Okay, Ms. Stein will keep track of the time. We're confident that the comments will be positive and respectful and contributing to the discussion and conversation tonight. Just in case they're not, then I'm going to interrupt you, and we're going to close down that public comment period, okay? So as a board, our job is to listen intently to your feedback. So thank you for your feedback. We will take that into consideration as we go through the night, but we will not reply to you at the end of the public comments. Okay? All right, so with that, okay, please proceed. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. I cannot imagine the amount of stress and pressure you have been through having to make such important and impactful decisions. It now comes down to whether or not to follow the recommendations on the use of face masks, but you must use your own discernment and not just idly comply. You should be questioning everything that doesn't have concrete factual evidence to back it up. A new study on masks and children has been published in JAMA Pediatrics. The existing scientific evidence challenges the safety and efficacy of masks. It confirms that masking children was unnecessary and legitimately dangerous. This research has found that wearing a mask causes children to inhale dangerous levels of carbon dioxide. In addition to lack of oxygen and excessive CO2 levels, breathing through mask causes bacteria and germs on both layers of the mask. These toxins are rebreathed back into the body, causing self-contamination. Masks have been demonstrated to have substantial adverse effects, including shortness of breath, fatigue, headaches, anxiety, depression, and much more. Healthy children should not be wearing these. I am more concerned as a parent that my child is going to get sick from the germs on their mask than getting sick from COVID-19. I'm a registered nurse, and healthcare workers wear surgical masks to prevent contact of bodily fluids, not to protect us or others from airborne pathogens. Cloth masks are non-PPE per OSHA standards. N95 masks are the baseline minimum for PPE. These children go everywhere unmasked. What sense does it make to force them to be masked at school? Children have never been super-spreaders. They have an extremely low risk of becoming infected. And the small percentage that have have experienced very mild symptoms that mimic the common cold. There is no defined statute requiring masks, nor is there any current law or mandate. No emergency authorized medical product can be forced as individuals have the option to accept or refuse. These include masks. It is not the government's job to protect our health. It is the government's job to protect our rights. While some may want to follow the letter of recommendation, the question that arises, can it be legally required? The fact is, after reviewing all of the studies worldwide, the CDC found no reduction in viral transmission with the use of face masks. So you have to wonder why they still recommend it. On July 21st, the FDA announced the PCR test for COVID-19 has failed its full review. EUA has been revoked. It is a Class 1 recall, the most serious type. All measurements based on PCR testing had to stop immediately. This test couldn't distinguish between COVID and the flu. Let that sink in. Every individual has authority over his or her body. Show me the law that gives you authority over our children's body. There isn't one. The FDA, CDC, and schools do not make law. All these entities and individuals that some people look up to for guidance have off-flipped continuously. What is right for you may not be right for me and vice versa, but what is not right is being stripped of the freedom to choose what is right for ourselves. The right for a healthy individual to breathe fresh air should not be up for debate. Masks should be made optional for all students.
Hi, I'm Olivia Brunzel. I was forced to wear a mask during school. It caused me bad headaches, and I felt like I couldn't breathe. It made me dizzy, and I felt like I was going to pass out. It was very hard to concentrate in class. I was literally suffering from not being able to get enough oxygen. I am begging you, please don't make a square mask anymore. I can't do it again.
Okay. Thank you, both of you, for your comments. Thank you, Olivia. Very brave of you. Okay, so turning to our next item of agenda, or on our agenda, we have the Safe Schools Committee update.
Good evening, everybody. This is Amy Carr. Thank you to those of us that joined us in the meeting, and thanks to those who are listening online. We're going to go through our presentation, and before we do that, I just want to say that we appreciate, as always, the feedback that we've received via email and other methods of communication. The Safe Schools Committee met several times throughout this month, really working on this project. So we're going to go ahead and go through that, and we're going to start with Ms. Stein. I thought we would go over kind of what's going on in terms of the toolkit, the governor's recommendation and whatnot. So Ms. Stein, if you want to go ahead and start.
Thank you, Ms. Carr. So I'm going to echo that. I really do appreciate. We've gotten a lot of feedback and a lot of heartfelt sentiment and very appropriately shared, which I appreciate because as stakeholders, it does take us all to do the best job we can on the behalf of kids. So to begin, Governor Cooper's executive order, which is Executive Order 220, expired on 7/31/21. Prior to that, that there were mask mandates that were specific to schools, so we had no option at that point. All public schools, including charters, are, as part of his continuing guidance to us, are follow, have to follow the NC DHHS, so North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, Strong Schools, NC Public Toolkit. Several changes were made to the toolkit, both on July 21st and on July 29th. One of the most substantial changes was that there is no more required language. So there was a lot of language in there originally that said schools must, schools are required to. And as a charter school, I explained in our last meeting, that as a charter school, one of the conditions of maintaining our charters is that you have to follow all health and safety guidance. And so sometimes people would look at other counties that had already stepped away from what the governor had said and wondered, well, why can Union County make that decision, and why can't Lake Norman Charter? And the answer was, as a charter school, if we did not, our charter would be in jeopardy or future renewals. A traditional public school is never in jeopardy of that happening to them. With that being said, there is not required language. It is now could, consider adopting, and should. And then the wording in there says that the Department of Health and Human Services strongly advises that school leaders adopt all strategies in the should sections. So that's the language change. Additional substantive changes to the toolkit include no more reference to remote learning requirements and different instructional delivery methods. So we were required last summer to come up with both a remote, hybrid, and full in-person instruction plans. Those plans were called Plans A, B, and C. Those plans are no longer listed in the toolkit. And I do think it's important, especially because I know we have some parents that are listening and families that wonder, well, why can't Lake Norman Charter offer a remote option at this point? And again, traditional public, if you were in CMS, they do offer a virtual academy at this point for grades three through 12. And the answer to that is, is that as a part of our charter, we have specific constraints as to what we can and cannot do. And it's sort of interesting because sometimes as charters, we have great flexibility, but then in other areas, we don't have any at all. And offering long-term virtual instruction, we are not permitted to do that. There are two virtual charter schools in the state of North Carolina. They were specifically chartered under that model, and they are the only two charters that may offer that type of long-term virtual instruction. Doesn't mean we can't run an e-learning day or do what we've done in the past, which we know is, you know, has been a good experience for our students, but it does mean that we can't substantively offer that option for kids, where last year we were actually required to do that. So just as a, as a point of clarification. And then another change was schools should require all children and staff K through 12 to wear face coverings constantly when indoors and should make mask use universal regardless of vaccination status. That is found on page nine of the Strong Schools Toolkit. There is one other important change, and that is a change in quarantining. So last year, if you were within six feet of somebody who had COVID-19 and were in that proximity, under six feet for more than 15 minutes, even with a mask or other barrier, you were considered exposed. And you were put out for quarantine for 14 days. The new guidance in the toolkit says that even if you do not, are not able to practice social distancing or are right next to a person with COVID, as long as both students or student and teacher, both individuals are wearing a mask, it does not warrant the person who is not infected to be quarantined. The quarantine went down. We follow what Mecklenburg County tells us to do. That's actually per the toolkit. It says, follow what your local guidance is. And the quarantine time is now 10 days. So if both people are masking, the person who is not infected will not be put out on a 10-day quarantine if both students and/or other person is masked. So that is that. So before we move to the health metrics, are there any questions about the toolkit or toolkit changes?
Shannon, a quick question on what you just discussed. So if the school were to go with a mask option, correct? Would the quarantine rules go revert back to the previous?
Yes, so I can use a
Continue to change?
No, so I can give you a very specific example. Union Academy, which is one of our peer charter schools, which is located in Union County, they've been around, I think, exactly the same amount of time, high-performing charter school. They went mask optional. They returned to full-time instruction learning last week. So last Monday was their first day of instruction. They have, this morning, for those of you may have seen it on the news, they've identified eight positive cases of COVID, which have now, at this point, have totaled 150 students having to be out on quarantine. Now, I don't know what Union County's quarantine rules are, but they, those students will now have to be removed from instruction and follow the full quarantine. So Union Academy has made the decision, because of the disruption to the learning environment based on that, that they are now going to full masking, as an example. So that is, that is what will happen if, if there are not dual masking. So, and that's, that's just one thing to weigh as you guys are making your decision.
Ms. Stein, I actually saw an update to that story, and there are now 15 confirmed COVID cases in that school. So. Okay, sorry. I was dazing off on that number, I guess. So one of the things that this committee really strives to do is, you know, the Governor Cooper and Dr. Cohen gave an update on the state level late last week on Thursday, but this committee really looks to, we pay attention to what's going on in the state, but we really want to look at what's going on in our own backyard. And throughout most of last year, the last school year, when we were making decisions, we even drilled down to LNC-specific data. Unfortunately, because, you know, well, fortunately, I guess, we've had the summer off, so we don't have any good data LNC-specific, because our kids, our kids and our staff have not been in school. So we are looking, really looking at kind of what's going on in our county. Overall, the county metrics have seen a rather rapid and swift uptick in the last, I'd say, probably three, three to four weeks. Dr. Cohen indicated that that is also going on at the state level. In her presentation last week, she noted that the rate of uptick, the curve on the uptick, is so much more substantial and greater than anything we saw in an uptick under the original strain of the virus, which is very concerning to them. There are a couple of reasons why that is going on. One reason is, under the original strain, the average person went on to infect two to three other people with this Delta variant, which is the prevalent variant in our county and within the state and really the United States. The average infected person goes on to infect six other people. So it's, it's in some cases more than doubling the, the transmission between people. Another reason is the Delta variant roughly has 1,000 times higher viral load in infected people. So we talked a lot last year about viral load. I think in the original strain, they saw viral loads in vaccinated people were relatively low. They're finding that in some vaccinated people, that, that is not a similar case. Studies are still being done on that. But, but on average, there is a significantly higher viral load to this variant than, than there was to the original strain. The last data update for the county was on July 28th. They update once a week every Wednesday. Usually, it's published Friday morning. And we're going to show a slide later on, because it's been a while since we've kind of talked numbers. So I do want to show, after I go through this, kind of how it compares over a period of time. But the daily new COVID cases, which is one of the metrics we look at, had a seven-day moving average of 288 cases per day compared to a 14-day moving average of 231. What's that, what's that showing us? Is that week after week, it's exponentially increasing. The positive, percent positive of our seven-day moving average was 10.9. This past week, which represents an increase over the last 14 days, I believe last week it was like 8.6, and the week before that, it was like 5.2. So we went from 5.2 to 10.9 in a matter of like two and a half weeks. Okay, next slide. Over the past seven days, we've had an average of 127 people hospitalized with COVID-19 infections. That represents an increase over the last 14 days. Approximately 52% of our population that is able to be vaccinated, which is the 12 and up group, has been partially vaccinated, 48% being fully vaccinated. And if you break it down to our 12 to 17-year-olds, which would be our population for half of our middle school and our high school, the vaccination rate countywide is 39%. In our local zip code areas, the rate of infection is lower, and the vaccination rate is slightly higher than some of the other areas. And we did talk about Union County already. I looked at the vaccination rate for Union County. And for total population fully vaccinated, it was 44%. So that's slightly below the Mecklenburg County average. It got really fuzzy trying to find the percent positive, like I looked for a while, and it was difficult. I did find the total number of cases. It was 82 over the last seven days on average, which is significantly less than Mecklenburg County, but Mecklenburg County is more densely populated. So I would expect, without seeing the percent positive, I wouldn't really put too much weight in that number. We try to look at things in total using various metrics, and if you rely kind of on one metric, it's, it's difficult to see the full picture. Okay, next slide.
Amy, quick question on
Yeah, sure.
Civilizations, the 127, was there any further detail about the kind of the age groups? Is that affecting child age, adults, seniors? Anything there that, you know, we might want to
Yeah.
Lean on as we think about what, you know, our next step here?
It is largely affecting the older population, including like our age category. But seeing some, and this is not what Mecklenburg County has published, but just seeing some articles and, and news articles and things like that, they are starting to see young children be affected and young, you know, could be like in the 20s, but, you know, but not, not with severe illness, you know? Not at this point. Okay, so this is what I alluded to earlier. As I'm kind of waxing poetic on numbers, it's been a long time since this committee has brought numbers specific to the group. I think the last time we did that was in March. So I thought this would be helpful to kind of look at. The first graph is the total number of cases, really since that first positive case in Mecklenburg County in March, or right after that first positive, because I think the first positive was actually a little earlier in March. You can kind of see, over last summer, we had an increase, and then we had our substantial increase over the winter months, that Christmas, January timeframe, and then the decline. It's hard to see in that first graph, because there's, you know, a long span of data, but you can kind of see towards the end, it start to rise. So where we are now is where we were in February, in terms of case count and in terms of percent positivity. And if you remember, in February, we were coming off a virtual option. We were in Plan C at the request of Gibby Harris and Mecklenburg Department of Health and Human Services. We were moving into Plan B, and when that, when it was at that 10.9% positivity, it was actually late January, we were on a downhill slide. So we continued to see the positivity drop through the remainder of the school year. We're at 10.9%, and we have, we're in the middle of an increase. So the good news is, the school year looks a lot different than it did in February when we were at those numbers. So, so, so we can be thankful for that. That's largely due to the vaccines. So Ms. Shipman is going to now talk about some contact tracing examples. I think that this was particularly helpful, but before she does, does anybody else have any questions about any of the local metrics?
So Amy, not necessarily a question, but just kind of an observation. So we have dipped, based on that bottom graph, we have dipped back into the substantial community spread here at 10%.
Yes.
And I believe, just from doing some of the research myself, the CDC also sort of identifies counties that are in that significant spread as well, and I believe Mecklenburg is in the CDC's guidance as well, is that correct?
Yes, so that, so I looked at a couple of things. So yes, Mecklenburg County has a county alert system. And so a week, well, two weeks ago, so not the 28th update, but on the 21st update, the county alert system's only updated every two weeks. So unfortunately, for the 28th, we did not get an update to that. If we had gotten an update to that, two weeks ago, when it was updated, we were in the yellow. If we were to have seen an update, like if it, you know, I would suspect if we are on the continued trajectory where we are, we will see that in the red. In the meantime, the CDC, I believe, last Wednesday or Thursday, did publish where you could drill down by your specific state and county, and it did have Mecklenburg County in the red, which they consider significant area of transmission. And when they talk about red counties, that's where they really are recommending that vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals mask up indoors. So under their old guidance, unvaccinated people were asked to mask indoors for, you know, the last however many months plus. That, that really has not changed. Where the change comes is asking that also vaccinated individuals mask up indoors, because they're seeing with this Delta variant, there's still, there's, there was a case in Massachusetts over the Fourth of July weekend, where there were 400, I think, 36 cases, 463 cases, something like that. Three-fourths of those people were vaccinated. So they're starting to see pop-ups of areas where vaccinated people, while they still say it is unlikely, they are starting to see cases where vaccinated individuals are showing signs of COVID. While they're, the one benefit to being vaccinated is your risk of being hospitalized or having a severe case of COVID is minimal. But they're, they're thinking that the viral load in those individuals is enough to still carry it or transmit it to other people, just because it is a more contagious virus. And Ms. Shipman, if I have misspoken on any of that, feel free to chime in and knock my hand, but
No, you are definitely correct.
So, so yes, to your question, we are in the red.
Yeah, thanks, Amy. And this, actually, the question for Shannon, I should have asked earlier, but you were speaking about the Union County school and the 150 kids in quarantine. So if we, whether it's 150 or a few kids in charter and quarantine, given we don't have the virtual option, what's, how would that be handled from kind of an educational?
Sure, it would be similar to when kids have been out on flu or, or other illness. They, they will work individually with their teachers to make contact during their, during their prep periods. We do have a little, depending on, on what's going on, we have a little bit of time during nighttime or after school. And, and the teachers, the one positive from last year is, there's been a lot of good content that the teachers have made ahead of time. And so they'll be able to be a bit more proactive with, with some of the materials. But our teachers are fantastic and very responsive. It's just not going to be during office hours, because those don't exist, and there are not Wednesdays anymore. So it'll have to be more during those, those prep periods and/or after school.
But I imagine it's easier to do when there are fewer kids than when you have a vast number.
Correct, and I think you bring up a really good point, Mr. Kilpatrick, which is, if we ever had a widespread outbreak, there is the jeopardy of us having to have us come back to you guys and say, we need more time in the schedule, because the, the teachers are going to be working full days with kids in front of them, right? And so in order to, if there's a substantial amount of children outside of school, there has to be made time in the day for them to do that, and the only place to get that is then reducing in some way the daily schedule so that they have that space and room to do that, because of just sheer numbers. If it's a small amount, they have time in their prep and prep period and after school and before school, but if it's a substantial amount, they would not.
Hey Shannon, do you have a sense of, on average, about how many kids we have, you know, that are absent from school on a given day? I'm just curious, like, how that would compare to something like the situation in Union County?
Yeah, I think I'm going to, I'm going to send that over to Ms. Shipman, who works closely with Ms. Stoller, who's sitting right next to her with attendance, and they can give an example at least at one school level.
I think I can give an example for the majority, because we tracked that a lot last year also. So I think that for all three campuses, I can, I think I can speak to that with some certainty. And for the middle school, anywhere between 20 and 30 students per day. And for the elementary school, it would be a little more, and for the high school, a little less than that. And for the elementary school, it would be a little more, and for the high school, a little less than that. On an average year with no COVID.
Right. And and remember, those absences could be for a variety of reasons. It's not always illness. It could be, you know, they're traveling or they have something else going on. At any given point, but that does gives you an idea of on one given day what that might look like at a school level.
And and that just goes to, I mean, that's manageable, right? But if that were to double, triple, quadruple, um not sure what critical mass is, but that would create some. Level of disruption.
It definitely would cause some type of disruption, yes.
And I think um, Mr. Telly, Ms. Shipman, in her next part of her presentation, she'll go over um. Specifically, like if we do have an outbreak and you don't, you you end up testing negative, and and I don't want to steal her thunder, but. It's not, it may not just be ten days, like it could be potentially more if other people within that group or if you come back and then there's another outbreak. So um, I think this, I, she shared this in committee and it, I thought it was really valuable to kind of see the impact. Um, especially because the guidance has changed where if you are both wearing masks, the quarantine for those that are not infected. Is is now, you know, it it doesn't need to happen. So um, so Ms. Shipman, if you could.
Sure. So I thought we would start out with just some of the things that the students are going to get back this year. I know we've spent some time focusing on the masks. And optional or not optional, and and that's certainly important, but I think it's important to note too, the things that the students are gonna get to have that are going to be normal. That are going to help with that social emotional piece that they didn't have last year that caused a lot of students, as we know, to struggle. So. You know, they're no longer going to have to do that social distancing. They're going to have a regular schedule. They don't have to cohort. Some of them are going to be on teams now. Because we found that to be um promising academically, but not because they're required to be cohorting. Um, they're gonna have a five-day week. They have a regular bell schedule. They're gonna get to share classroom materials and do labs and things that they might not have necessarily gotten to do last year. Some of them, they could do. Because they could be sanitized and cleaned in between, but some they could not. Um, and some, for some, social distancing was a problem for shared materials and labs. And we're not going to have to do that either. So they're going to get a lot more socialization this year with their peers that they weren't able to get. In an organic way last year. So the two-way hallways and eating in the cafeteria, just being able to use water fountains and their lockers. Are going to be just that piece of normal that we didn't realize we missed until we didn't have it. And of course, for carpool, it's going to be normal, be normal morning carpool and afternoon carpool. We've got, of course, things. That are going to stay from last year, which are going to be, you know, we're gonna have plenty of hand sanitizer. We're going to do frequent hand washing. We're going to make sure that the students are doing the things that they need to do to be safe. Those are things that we're keeping from last year, but those are. Certainly not all the things that we're keeping from last year, air quality, filters, all those things to help keep our staff and students safe. We're using that too. But that's not what we're talking about. We're just talking about what's going to make the students be able to have a normal year. So let's go with, this is an average-sized class. Sally's eleven years old. She's in her average-sized class. No one in her class can be vaccinated. And her parents are not quite sure what they should do or how masking is going to go. So here are twenty to twenty-five kids in a class.
I'm gonna hold you for a second, because I, Ms. Johnson just informed me that it is not moving along. So let me see if I can. See if I can stop the share and then try it again. Sorry to have you, you don't need to re-go through that. I just need to make sure that the people on the other side can see what we're, what we're showing. So.
Sure.
Okay, why don't we start with that and see if we have better luck and I'll stop again if I need to.
Okay, so we'll just go back to that. Sally's eleven years old. She's in this class. She can't be vaccinated. Her peers can't be vaccinated. There are twenty-two to twenty-five students per class. So in this scenario, masks are optional. Kids are there. No social distancing, no cohorting. They're just doing their regular, everyday thing. Little Johnny, as you see down there on the, next to the bottom row, little Johnny wasn't feeling well today. He went through all of his classes because school's important to him. He wasn't feeling well today. He got home, he talked to his mom. They took him to the clinic. He got a COVID test. He is positive for COVID. So with that, we'll just go right to the next slide. Uh, while we're talking about that, just as a side note. People who are positive for COVID are considered contagious two days prior to their onset of symptoms. So. We'll not just be contract, contact tracing for today. We would also be contact tracing for the two days prior. Okay, circled in red are all the students who sat around Johnny the day that he was not feeling well in his first period class. So that is, what is that, eight students not counting Johnny? Okay, some of those students had a mask, some of those students did not. We know that the students who were not wearing a mask would be considered exposed under normal circumstances. With the new information that's out there and the new exposure rules, actually, if you flip to the next page, next slide. They are all considered exposed, mask or not. If one, if if they're not all wearing the mask. Then it doesn't matter if some were masked and some were not. They are all considered exposed and they would all be out. For a ten-day at this time, a ten-day quarantine. The only thing that keeps them from having to be out for a ten-day quarantine. If they're not wearing, if they're not both individuals wearing the mask, as Ms. Stein indicated earlier, would be if for some reason they were vaccinated. Which in this case would not be possible. If they had had COVID in the last ninety days and only ninety days, that's as far back as they'll let us go. And that, that would be the only way that they would not be considered. Exposed as if they were vaccinated, which they're not, or if they had had COVID in the last ninety days. So if Johnny had, went to all six of his classes and he. Basically exposed eight students per class, as you can see, you count carpool, lunch, physical activity, gym class, band. Wherever he went with that, that is fifty-plus kids from just one student that is. COVID-positive that are going to be exposed if they are not all wearing a mask. So, and here is the scenario for that. In this particular case, unless they were vaccinated, not possible, COVID-positive in the last ninety days. They would not have to quarantine. Only the COVID-positive student would have to quarantine for their quarantine time. Everyone else would not be considered exposed and they would be allowed to return to school. They'll be out for ten days. They could come back and on day fourteen, prime example happened to many students last year. Out ten days, come back to school for three days, sit within however many feet of another person who's COVID-positive and be out for another ten days. So the the time lost could be quite substantial, depending, of course, on the spread in school and how many positive cases you had. While their cases might be minor or they might not be COVID-positive at all. Even if you, as the parent, say, I want my student to wear a mask every day. If the other student in the room who's COVID-positive is choosing not to wear a mask, then the mask that your student wore does not count. They are still exposed. They are still out for ten days per time.
Ms. Shipman, can you talk about what happens during the time from uh the child recognizing that they're not feeling well? To the point that they actually receive a test, because sometimes that, that doesn't happen that same day, right? Sometimes that's a day or two or three.
It could be, uh sometimes a day or two or three. Um, we'll be utilizing a vendor along with some testing this year. So hopefully we will not have that couple of day lag, but parents do have the option to get their own test elsewhere. And so if they're not using our vendor. And we can't get them tested right away during that timeframe, they are symptomatic. That is when we start doing our investigation. To determine which students they were with. That's why one of the things we'll be carrying over from next, from last year is seating charts. They'll get to sit where they want, but once they determine those seats, they'll have seating charts because we'll need them for contact tracing. So that's where we begin our contact tracing. And if it's done properly, it takes, it takes a couple of days to get it all done and get it done right. Um, there are several people in this room, that want to be, want to be said, who that walked around with me in the classrooms at the high school. And sat down in the COVID person's chair with his six-foot, because at that time, six-foot mattered, six-foot stick and measured every classroom on every hall. That all of those students had. So those, those days are used contact tracing. Now, another piece that has changed is that. They don't have to get the PCR. So back last year, when we thought you weren't feeling well and you got a test, you had to have a PCR. Now, we can do it with a molecular, we we can do it with an antigen test, a rapid test. So we can get those results back much quicker. We don't have that two or three-day lag that you remember from last year.
Okay, thank you.
Do you find that um, Ms. Shipman, those um molecular tests, and we may not know at this point, um, because the data is still too new. Do you find that um, I think the reason that they requested the PCR was because they were finding that sometimes those rapid tests were not as accurate. Are we finding that those with this Delta variant are more accurate because the viral load is higher? It's picking it up?
So certainly not a scientist, but I will say that I did have some uh rapid tests that came back negative. That were followed up with a PCR, kind of like when your kid had strep throat and they run the lab, oh, it's negative, but we're gonna send it off. That came back positive. I would say that's the case with all kinds of of tests, not just that. And I can't speak to the, how fast the Delta variant would make an antigen pop. Because I have not experienced that yet, so.
Quick, quick question, or maybe it's more of a comment. I don't know if this is for you, Amy, or Ms. Shipman, but. In a scenario where masks are optional, I think I'm still trying to wrap my head around why the kids who are masked would be. Going into quarantine.
Because that is the guidance that is issued to us by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services and the Department of Public Instruction.
So it's just the guidance. Was there any context to why that would make sense?
So I can't speak to their data, but there, that is, that, with that, that is what we through Mecklenburg County would have to follow. Masked or not masked. If they're not both masked, they have to quarantine.
Okay.
I have a question. Um, how will we manage for lunch period? Will there be assigned seats at lunch?
Yes, they will have assigned seats at lunch and the current plan, depending on how this vote goes. The current plan, they still have to eat, no matter how this vote goes, is that they will, or not, um, they will go to the cafeteria. They will unmask, eat their lunch, mask back up, and then they can communicate and talk with their friends all they want. So they'll have that ten-minute period where we will ask them to just eat your lunch. And once you're, you've eaten your lunch, you can throw your mask back on. And then you can socialize. Some students will, they choose to eat outside. That would be a different scenario.
What about recess for the elementary and middle school?
They are not required to wear a mask outside and so therefore it would not be counted.
How would the contact tracing work?
Contact tracing for that usually works through talking with the students, depending on their age, also with the teachers and we have. And if we need to, we can check our video cameras.
And then my. Uh, just to clarify, are you asking how contact tracing would work at recess?
Yeah, so so you've given this example.
Recession would not be a need for contact tracing because they're, they're outside, correct. So if there is outside physical activity, recess. Lunch, um, some of our teachers take their students outside to do different activities, physical education. None of that is, the mask can be removed. And the the children do not, there is no contact tracing when, as long as the activity is outside.
Correct. Thank you. Just for, I just wanted to clarify.
Um, and then just to back up to the prior question about why no mask, are we even, if Mecklenburg County didn't have the school. Are we even in a position to keep track of who's wearing a mask and who isn't?
Absolutely not.
Yes, I have a question. So this same scenario then would apply for sports, if it's an indoor sport like volleyball? Like outdoor sports?
Yes.
And I'm sure Mr. Schlegel would be happy to jump in.
Well, I was, well, I was just getting ready to say, you know, when you start talking about high school sports and after-school sports when they're on a team, then you get other entities involved. And they have their own set of rules. But if you're talking about, we're in gym class and we're playing volleyball, then yes, there are a different set of scenarios for that. If you're talking about, I'm on the volleyball team, and then that is definitely a different entity and they have their own set of rules that they have to follow.
And I'll let Mr. Schlegel hop in here in just a second. It is the um, the uh, the NCHSA. Who puts out the guidance for that. And as an example, our football team, when they have been in the weight room, have been masking this summer outside. They have not been masking. Um, when it comes to some of the different sports, they will issue guidance based on best practice and and what that looks like. So there may be a scenario, I'll use volleyball and then he can speak to that. Maybe a scenario where I'm sitting on the bench where I have to wear a mask, but when I'm on the floor, I'm. Spread out, so guidance may not be the same for that. So, Mr. Schlegel, is there anything else you'd like to add? Because I know we're, we're lacking guidance from the NCHSA right now.
We are lacking guidance, but you actually hit it on on the the head there. Hello, okay. Um, you hit it right on the head there. So we are waiting for more guidance from the NCHA, but right now, if they're outdoors, they don't have to be masked. When they're indoors, we're recommending that, once again, if you're stretching, you're walking in, you're leaving, you're masked up. But as you're doing the activity and you're getting involved and running around, your mask can be now. So that's where we're at currently until we hear more from the NCHA.
And I do think it's important to note as we walk through this, guidance changes, data changes, cases come and go, and so we have to be responsive to that. But prior to the original change to the toolkit, actually acknowledged that more high schoolers could get vaccinated. So originally it was, um, the guidance was, there could be optionality at the high school. And again, that's the should, that's just what they're recommending. And then they reeled that back because of the ever-changing Delta variant information. I mention that because it will, at some point, hopefully. Change back the other way. I mean, the idea here is, is we want, and as Ms. Shipman laid out, we are, wherever the board decides. We are going to have a largely normal school year, and that is what we're striving for. Our teachers are excited and prepared for. The masking is the one question that is out there. But regardless, the rest of that, we feel very confident that we're moving in the right direction. And our sincerest hope is that things will start to turn around and that we will be able to come back, just like we did in the spring, with updated guidance and information. Because that's, that's where it was tracking.
And our own numbers. And I think that as the school year goes on, we will be able to have our own numbers. You know, parents are going to want their children to have something different. Than what may or may not happen here tonight. And, you know, as parents are volunteering up their vaccine information for their high schoolers and whatnot. To make that happen and we have our own data, fine, then we will, you know, maybe there, there'll be time for a different decision there if we're allowed to, to make one at that time. But until we have our own data, I, you know, I just, I want to be sure that we are taking into consideration all of the, all of the options. And I know that you guys are are struggling with that. I did want to take a minute and thank Amy and the committee. I know that we've spent so much time on the phone. You guys have spent countless volunteer hours trying to figure out how to do this. It's not an easy decision, whichever way you go. It's not an easy decision. And no matter what you decide, someone's not going, it's not going to be the decision some of our stakeholders are wanting. And whichever way you go. And I, and I know that that's hard. And I know that it's hard for the board to make those decisions too. And I appreciate the time that you're spending on that. I'd like to remind you, you all have students here. And when you chose to fill out an application for Lake Norman Charter because you wanted something different than your homeschool for your child. There was a board sitting here, just like you, who had to make some hard decisions about things that weren't gonna make every stakeholder. The happiest that they could be, but we still have awesome teachers. We still have a great program. We're still the best in the country. And and that choice is still the best choice you ever made for your child. So no matter what you decide here tonight, just know that you're doing the best. For these students as the board before you did for your students who are here now. And I appreciate you.
Thank you, Ms. Shipman. One, one additional question. You you mentioned collecting vaccination data. There are process in place for doing that. And we thought how we're gonna.
There is not a process in place. There is a little foreshadowing in the toolkit about how they might require some vaccination information. About COVID, for COVID vaccinations, just like they do for other things like tetanus and whatever. Um, so yes, there, there is some foreshadowing for that. We certainly aren't doing it now, but um, you know, parents. Are of course free to to share whatever information that they would like. And if that's, if that's what it takes to get us where we need to be, then. There you go.
And it's definitely gonna be something we have ongoing conversations about, you know, it's a fine line. We want to respect people's health rights. And it would obviously be a voluntary thing, but it also is an important data point for you as a board, because um, Mr. Smith and I have talked about this. We thirty-nine, currently in Mecklenburg County, thirty-nine percent of twelve to seventeen-year-olds are vaccinated. In our anecdotal conversations, we believe that's higher at Lake Norman Charter. But can I say that with certainty? No, I can't say that with certainty. I can just say that we believe that that is, and it would be consistent with what you see in the countywide data of um, of what that looks like. So, you know, that may become a point where if the board is considering options, that if they're leaning towards becoming less restrictive. It, you know, we, we will look at how can we gather that data if people are comfortable sharing that, because it will be important for you to know. Any other questions? Otherwise, we can go on with, I'll talk about the enhanced protocols and. Okay, um, so just a reminder, especially since we have a lot of families. Okay, um, so just a reminder, especially since we have a lot of families that are joining us remotely. Um, we do have some really good processes and procedures and protocols in place that worked very well for us last year. So regardless of whatever the board decides in this matter, it is important to know that, um, we had increased our air filtration in every one of our classroom units to a MIRF thirteen, which is the highest level you can that is not HEPA. And some people say, well, why don't you do HEPA? Because our systems can't handle HEPA. You have to have a certain type of system cause to, to pull the air in. But, but this is as close as it comes and it worked very well for us. We use some of the federal funding, which is called ESER funding, to replace common area filtration systems. That's why there was no air conditioning in for the last board meeting, um, in the common areas such as this media center, the cafeterias and larger spaces. Um, the new systems will have pi bipolar ionization, which eliminates up to ninety-nine point nine percent of pathogens. Um, we will continue to employ increased day porters that help to clean the surfaces and have enhanced cleaning protocols. We will use electrostatic spraying as needed. So if there was a COVID positive case um, in a classroom or an area, we will use that as a cleaning method. We will continue contact tracing. And as we've talked about before, hand sanitizer, enhanced hand washing. And, um, I use Sanicu. That is our um, cleaner that our teachers can use that is student safe. Um, that can be sprayed when there's a period of time that they can dry naturally on a surface. It also helps to, um, kinda like if you wipe off with Lysol wipes. Um, but that is a kid's safe version. So that, that will be continued to use as well. So we do have a lot of things in place. The contact tracing will have seating charts and those things, but we do wanna get back to all the things that Ms. Shipman listed. Um, to allow our students to better socialize and then to enjoy their overall school experience.
Are you ready for the next slide? And if they have any questions? Okay.
So the Safe Schools Committee did review all of the data that you've seen, had similar discussions and, um, questions that you had. And at this time, out of an abundance of caution, the recommendation from that committee is that for all students and staff that they recommend masking while indoors regardless of vaccination status. Um, and you'll see how that might change in a bit. We are also asking our volunteers and visitors. That's another positive change that we're very excited to get our community back into the schools. And, um, but we will ask that visitors and volunteers mask. And that will probably stay because contact tracing would be a nightmare. I mean, we, we wanna have folks in, but we, we need to make sure that we can contact trace. So that is the recommendation. And before we answer any questions, I think it's important to note, could there be other changes? Yes, ideally, we wanna keep moving in a positive direction. The Safe Schools Committee will closely monitor local data, including LNC data and, um, other schools to see if there are changes and recommendations that can be made to further move in a positive direction. We'll be looking at the successes and challenges of the other school districts. Um, so tonight we, we named Union Academy. They had a challenge, but we may look at other co-schools because there are many schools that have gone mask optional that will serve as an opportunity for us to see, are they having success? And at what levels? We'll look at LNC vaccination rates at some point and health data in order to determine if a phased approach to loosening protocols are warranted. So I put that out there as we all very much want to get to a place where again, we are getting, marching towards normal. Um, but we also have to balance that with, our job is to have kids in school. And disruptions to the learning environment, disruptions to the amount of school time we can teach because we have to have office hours, disruptions when people are on a quarantine, those are not small things to take into consideration. And before we go to a more or a less restrictive environment, we need to make sure we can do so in, in a way that isn't going to not only be unsafe, but also disrupt um, this learning that we know is, is very valuable in person, relational with teachers. And so that's why the recommendation is more conservative at this point. And it will be something that the Safe Schools Committee, depending on what the board decides to do, will continue to look at.
Do we have a specific timeline and we will sort of revisit this regardless of what the, you know, decision is tonight? Or is it just gonna be ongoing based on how things change or what, what updates we get in terms of the data? What's, what's the thinking beyond tonight?
Well, I can tell you, I'll speak for myself, I eat, breathe and sleep this stuff. I mean, we are, I mean, leading up to this decision, I mean, it has been on my thoughts, in my mind, uh, the whole committee, um. Certainly, I mean, i- i- if data starts changing at, at the next Mecklenburg County update on Wednesday, which will be published next Friday, then any one of the committee members, we've always had this rule, like we can ask to call a meeting. So if any one of us sees something compelling out there, and I think that's the big thing, compelling. Like to go against the recommendation of not only the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, our State Department of Health and Human Services and our local Department of Health and Human Services. Like you really have to have a compelling reason to go against what they're recommending. And last year, when we had internal specific data, you know, we thought, okay, there are cases where we can deviate maybe from, and, and, and I, I won't split hairs in terms of last year, a lot of stuff was required. So you can't hard stop. We're not going against what's required. But when it's something that's suggested or recommended, um, the committee really felt like we can start to build cases to go against or to deviate. I won't say go against, but to deviate from those things, but we really have to have a compelling reason why. And that can be local metrics, that can be internal LNC metrics. That can be, Ms. Shipman has an abundance of parents sending pictures of their kids' vaccination cards. I mean, I, I don't know, um. So there are so many things that could trip an alternate decision. And, and, and we've talked a lot as a committee, more specifically last year. Give me the magic number, the magic, you know, five percent. I think, you know, there was a, a period of time where that percent positivity at five percent was like the golden standard. And it's really difficult to do that. And I think, um, you have to look at, at stuff in total. And, and so it's hard to say, like, at one point, there was legislation on the table where they were requiring boards to vote on it monthly. Um, I would hope if we see a dramatic shift in data, that would be something that we could tackle sooner than that. But you know, we just don't know. Um, we could be sitting here next month, it's still masked and you know, things are looking more dire. I hope not. I really do. Um, but our, our primary objective is to take the emotion out of it to really look at the data and, and you know, we have, we established as a committee a set criteria that we, you know, will follow. And, um, until one of those, you know, criteria trips a different decision, especially because it's not a, a mandate. Um, I, I wish I could, uh, you know, as soon as possible. I mean, certainly I, I look at this data every week at minimum. And, um, you know, and, and Ms. Stein and, and Ms. Shipman, we're, we're constantly in contact. If there's something operationally that happens, like for example, we find out that ninety percent of our kids are vaccinated, then you know, there's an alternate decision there, or at least an alternate, you know, reason. So I wish I could say once a month, like the legislation might have mandated, but you know, we're hoping as soon as possible. We'd like to see, you know, I, I, I feel good about the progress that we've been able to make, considering how we're at the same, you know, local data numbers as last February. That the school year looks a lot different now. Um, so, but we're, we're on it.
And, and yeah, that's, you know, I appreciate that. And I do wanna thank you and the committee for all the, the time and work and effort you put into this. And I know it's, it's tough coming up with a recommendation and, um, we appreciate what all, what, what you guys have done as a committee. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, we're, we're happy to do it. Um, you know, I just, I hope that, I know it's hard sometimes to pull back that curtain and really see what's going on. And I hope that, you know, certainly the questions tonight, I think, you know, we're able to showcase like how much we've really thought about this, how much we've researched. Um, I was up at three thirty, uh, yeah, last, uh, Tuesday morning, Wednesday morning, when I thought the board meeting was gonna be Wednesday night. And then I was up at three thirty again this morning, thinking about this, you know? I mean, it's, it's hard. It's hard. We, you know, none of us like to be in this position. But we have to get these kids in school. I think on that, that's the one thing that we can all agree on. And we have to do it in the safest way possible with the least amount of disruptions. And we'll get there. We'll get there. Um, and the committee is looking forward to, I, I would love nothing more than to, to have that recommendation where it's like, we're back to normal a hundred percent. Like I live for that day. So, um, we'll get there. It's just, you know, we're asking, you know, for those, the, for those out there, I, I get it. I get that you might be disappointed with, you know, the recommendation that this committee has put forth. I appreciate that. I, you know, that's what makes the world go around. We have all different perspectives. But at the very least, I hope that you can appreciate that this was something that was very well thought out. It was within the best interests of our children in mind, um, with the primary objective of, of getting these kids as close to possible as normal as we could. Um, and you know, and we all look to, you know, getting, getting that much closer, so.
And that, that ten day period, um, again, I hate to go back to this, but I'm just wanna make sure. To me, that ten day period just feels very disruptive. That is the same period that, that, that was in place before. So nothing's really changed. And that's how we operated last year, correct?
Well, but the, the difference was we ended an hour early because we had remote learning. So originally the thought process was if we end the school day an hour early, the teachers would have time to check in with the remote learners. But what we found was that was also a time for them to check in with their quarantine students. So they could provide materials, answer questions. Um, you know, if a teacher has, you know, ten, let's say ten kids or eight kids and her, in, in the shipment's example out in, out in quarantine, she no longer has that, or he or she no longer has that extra hour or Wednesday seminar. Um, that was another day that, you know, we could provide that check in. And so you know, this ten day quarantine period, what it does is it amounts to the teacher maybe feel, you know, submitting, giving them assignments, but there's no instruction. And so, um, you know, I, I have no doubt, I mean, we have exceptional teachers at the school. I have no doubt that they're going to, to, um, make sure that these kids, you know, stay up, but at what cost? You know, and, and that's what we really have to consider.
So Jared, I'd just like to, to respond to the one thing. Um, so just like tonight where we called an emergency board meeting because of new guidance. Anytime circumstances warrant, we're gonna call another board meeting, whether it's on cycle or off cycle. And we'll have another dialogue and we'll come back and, and we'll, uh, vote and come together as a collective group and, and see where it goes. So. Um, the Safe Schools Committee, um, to echo what Jared said, thank you, cause this wasn't easy. Fifty-three weeks ago, basically today, we were making yet another emergency board meeting. And unfortunately, we're right back in that, that same spot, making yet another emergency board meeting. So where we collectively thought, both hoped, prayed, I don't know, that some of this was gonna be behind us. It, it just hasn't panned out that way unfortunately. So, um, I think the Safe Schools Committee, I know they're gonna stay engaged and they're gonna keep monitoring this.
Yeah, and I'm gonna, I, I, I think I'm gonna be positive Pollyanna right now because while this is a difficult decision around one part of the layering of protection, we are, we are not quite in the same place. Like we are in a much different place. We know how to deal with this. We know what the best protocols are. We've had experience. And, um, I am very, very encouraged about what we're going to be able to provide and do with our students. So, and I know that wasn't the intent, but I, I wanna echo that cause it, it is, it, this will be disappointing news if that's the board's decision for some people or vice versa. There are people that very much think this is the right. So it's, it's hard because everybody has a different story and path. And we have to honor those, those experiences. But regardless, we, we have a good plan and we are in a, in a different place because we, we know better, so we do better. So I am excited about that and I do wanna have at least one little positive note on that.
Oh, all good things. I mean, like I said, this year looks so different already compared to like where we were last year at any one point in time. And that is celebration enough. So for sure. Um, so anyways, are there any other questions from anybody else before we move to make a motion?
Okay, uh, well, let's go ahead and, uh, if someone could make a motion, please.
I moved that we accept the recommendation of the Safe Schools Committee.
This is Greg, I said. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion carries. All right, uh, I believe that was the last item on the agenda. So is there a motion to, um, close?
This is Jared. I moved that we, uh, close the session.
Okay. Any other questions, further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? All right, thank you. We're adjourned.